Hello, everyone, and good evening to the Castro Valley Unified School District Board Meeting. I am going to open the meeting and call the meeting to order. May I have approval of the agenda?
Move approval of the agenda.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? The only thing I will say is Michael Kuziak, our Vice President, is not here, so I would like to nominate Gary Howard as my VP Clerk this evening, if you're okay with that.
It's okay with me.
Is anyone else? Is that okay with everyone else? Great. So with that, your preferential vote. Oh, sorry. Yeah, sorry. I'm so used to a board member first. Yes.
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. The motion passes for zero. Are there any public comments for items not on the agenda, Amy? All right. Well, with that, we will move and recess to closed session. And we will be back at 6:00 PM. Thank you so much. Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Castro Valley Unified School District Board Meeting. We are reconvening to open session. As a report out, we're really excited that we did take action in closed session to appoint Ms. Stacy Lillard as the new Director of Special Education with a vote of four to zero by Trustee Adams with the first motion and Trustee Raymond with the second motion. We're really excited to meet her next board meeting on the 28th and looking to see what great things she does in our special education community. Yay for Stacy. We will take action now in open session on items that were presented us in closed session. And the first item that we will need to vote on is the readmission persuading to education code 48916A case 12-2122.
A move that we vote to readmit.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. The motion passes four to zero. Now, we will move on to closed session, item B, readmission persuading to education code 48916A case 2-2223.
I move that we readmit student number 2-2223.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Yes.
Motion pass. Oh, I will vote yes, and we will. Motion passes four to zero. The next item is item 2C, readmission persuading to education code 48916A case 3-2223.
I'll move approval of the item.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Howard? Trustee Adams?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. The motion passes for zero. Now on to item 3D, mission statement. Trustee Howard, will you please read our mission statement?
Sure. "We work together to provide safe, challenging, innovative, and culturally responsive learning environments to ensure that all our students feel respected and supported to achieve their unique academic potential and explore their individual talents."
Thank you, Trustee Howard. And for those of you in the room and online, we will read our public comment instructions. "The Board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the Board Agenda and within the Board's jurisdiction. The Board fully supports civil discourse and requested everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the Board must complete a request to speak form or via the Google form at www.cv.k12.ca.us/publiccomment/ and submit it prior to the start of the agenda item. At the discretion of the Board President, speaker cards may be accepted after the start of the agenda item. Your name will be called, and you will either come to the podium to speak or be unmuted during your turn and be allowed to make comments after the allotted time. You will be then remuted. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes unless the Board decides otherwise. There are up to 30 minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With Board consensus, the President may increase or decrease the time allowed. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. To comply with the Brown Act, the Board may listen to comments from the speakers under public comment but can neither discuss nor take action on the issues presented." With that, we will move to item four. And I will open the public hearing. And the Governing Board will convene a public hearing to receive public testimony concerning proposed trustee voting area plans associated with the district's transition to a bi-trustee area election system.
Yeah, I'm gonna start us off. Welcome. I wanted to just mention again, there is a ton of information on our website. There has been since we started this work. There are a couple of other things that Amy has done. I wanted to her to just kind of go over so people know where to get more information. Thank you, Amy.
Yeah, I just added today lots of information about everything on the board meeting tonight, but also some Instagram reels and links. And the big thing is just a lot of content is on our website.
So if you have, there's FAQs and there's just a ton of information. I did want to, before we get started, thank Amy for all she has done to get as much of this message out. And the maps are also in the library if anybody wants to check them out. But thank you for being here.
Thank you. And just to add to that, because of Amy's work, there have been comments made online. I will share them at the end of the presentation with everybody thus far, including some questions that will answer that were received through either online or thought exchange, et cetera. So even if you can't make it to a meeting, if you submit questions, comments, it will be heard before the Board votes in a couple of weeks. Good evening, everybody. I'm Jonathan Salt with F3 Law, joined by Chris from Cooperative Strategies. We are the folks helping the district through this transition process. Tonight is our second map public hearing. There will be a third and final map public hearing on June 20th. After that public hearing, the Board will then have a resolution before it. Thank you, 28th, June 20th, to vote on which map option it will submit to the County Committee for Approval. What we're going to do the presentation tonight is we're going to walk through it, walk through each of the maps. And at the end of that, before comment, I will share the feedback received. And then possibly, as I go through it, maybe answer some of the questions or share thoughts on it so that everyone's on a level playing field about what's going on. So first of all, why is the district making this change? Well, the California of the Rights Act says that if you have an at-large election system, which the district currently has, if that system impairs the ability of members of protected classes from electing candidates of choice or influencing the outcome of an election, and that system could violate the CVRA. And the only safe harbor from a CVRA claim is to transition, as the district is doing, to a bi-trustee area or district-based election system, where the district will be divided into five roughly equal population areas. And a trustee will be elected from each area only by the voters who live in that same area. Now, ultimately, the goal will be to have one person per area. But in the interim period of time, the current trustees serve out their full terms regardless of where they live. Overall, district-wide, there's about 53,000 people, so a little over 10,600 people per area is the perfect number, but anything within a variance of a couple hundred is allowed and is perfectly legal. I'm going to hand it off to Chris to talk more about demographics and then the maps.
So as spoken about last meeting on Monday, over here, just for clarification sakes, these are the census blocks, and the shapes of these census blocks can range from a simple polygon or sides or corners to, is this the? Oh, okay, the laser, okay. To some sort of weirdly shaped polygon that could resemble octopus or a squid or the shape of the country of Chile. So again, when it comes to drawing.
The reason we're showing these census blocks is because a census block cannot be split up when drawing a line on a map for this purpose, because then we don't know how many people live where. So everyone put the census a year and a half ago, two years ago, and that said, how many people live where? And so that's how we know how we get the perfect number of people per trustee area. So as you can see on this very, very kind of zoomed out map, there are very large and oddly shaped trustee areas. There are also very small trustee areas. The size of the area doesn't really have much to do with the actual population. There are large areas with seven people. There are small areas with 1,200 people. It really just depends on the census block. But some of the lines that you see on the map, well, they're all based on these census blocks, so we can't just draw a straight up and down line unless that line exists like it tends to do along Redwood Road.
So over here on this slide is basically how the Asian population has responded to the C-VAP surveys by the American Community Survey. And just for clarification sakes, the darker the blue basically means the proportion of the Asian population that responded to the survey. So you might have nine out of 10 in a particular census block that have responded, and that would be a proportion of the density of the population. Whereas you might have a lighter area where you could have 1,000 people residing there and only 90 Asian population people would respond with their racial component in that particular census block.
And one thing we noticed, and we talked about in the last meeting, is kind of where Crow Canyon sort of turns. You can see there's a very, very dark blue shape in the sort of center of the district there. That, and then the areas again to the, say, the south and the east of that area are extremely populated and extremely populated with the Asian population. And so that is a an area that we really don't want to split up on a map because that would dilute that that group's voting power. So essentially, that's going to stay together. That was sort of similar concept to the recent Supreme Court case that came out. Not exactly the same, but the extent that there are concentrations, we want to keep them together. And so district-wide, what C-VAP is, is citizen voting age population. So essentially, it's an estimate from the census of folks who are US citizens and over the age of 18. So in a prospective eligible voters, not necessarily registered voters, but folks who are of voting age and US citizens. So district-wide, it's about 10% Latino, about 25% Asian. And so in a district-wide at-large election, some of those particular groups may not have the ability to elect a candidate of choice or influence the outcome of the election. A transition does tend to help the particular protected classes gain influence in at least one trustee area, as you'll see.
I'm just gonna just say something right there, because when we talk about a percentage of Latinos or Asians or whites or African Americans in the community, it's very different than the percentage in our school district. So in our school district, we have 27% Latino, about 30% Asian. So that's, we're talking about the whole community, whether they are in our schools or not, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
And as discussed earlier with the Asian population, the same methodology has been applied to this heat map with the Hispanic Latino population, again, as a proportion of the Latinos residing in a particular census block compared to the total population within that census block. And I'm going to hand it over to Jonathan's.
Again, the number one criteria, the sort of the unbreakable no negotiation whatsoever for drawing the maps is equal population within the permissible variance. So again, there's about 10,600 people per area is the sort of perfect number. That can really range more or less between 10 and 11,000. That's in the legally acceptable range that, you know, we can't have one area that has 3,000 and a different one that has 20,000. That would not be allowed. Other considerations besides equal population, we have to comply with the Federal Voter Rights Act. That's probably the second most important kind of unbreakable rule. That's why we look at that C-VAP chart so that we're not, it's called cracking or packing. So cracking means that you're splitting up a concentration of a protected class. Can't do that. And packing means that you're reaching everywhere and trying to grab and pack a particular group into an area, which you also can't do. So to the extent that the concentrations exist, they should be kept together, but we shouldn't go create weird lines to try to keep them together. That is kind of the number two priority. Everything else is really up to the Board and the community's discretion. So these next things, which are, tend to be things that we all focus on, are still secondary to equal population and the Federal Voter Rights Act. So those things are local communities of interest. You know, I think this neighborhood makes sense to go with this one. I think this makes sense to be a good boundary. That's all secondary to, you know what, we got to keep the population equal. Has to be compact to the extent possible, contiguous, so we can't start a trustee area in one corner of the district, stop it, and then start it again somewhere else and say, that's all area two. Doesn't work that way. And then we cannot favor or discriminate against an incumbent. So essentially, a line can't be drawn solely because somebody lives there. And so with that, we have four map options that have been on the website for about a week and a half now for consideration. And I'll have Chris go through them. I'll talk about the sequencing, and then we'll look at some of the stats for each map.
So this is the first map that has been drafted, and the goal of this map was to basically equally distribute the population with a 1% variance of the total population to comply with the CVRA. And, oh, there we go. And if we are to compare the total population with the ideal population of 10,617, the highest population of this one has the trustee area number one with the high of 0.6% and the lowest population being trustee area number three with the negative 0.5%.
And so just that, there's a lot of numbers on this chart. So the simplest way to read this chart for what Chris is talking about is see the blue line that says trustee area one, trustee area two, trustee area three. Right below that, it says population. So that's the total number of people in each one of those areas. And the one underneath that, population variance, is the actual amount of people above or below the perfect number, if we could have exactly a perfect number of people per area. So area one, for example, has 59 people or 0.06% over the perfect number of 10,617, whereas area three has 50 below that number. Wait, you know, 0.5% below averages out to 1% variance. That's what a variance is. The variance can be up to 10 and still be completely legal. This is just, the point of this map was to try to see if we could find a fairly balanced map, almost putting on the backburner some of the other factors, just to see kind of what it would look like. And so when we talk about variance into the upcoming maps, those kind of strips on the chart here are what we're looking at, and that's what Chris means.
And if we are to take a look at the, going back to the C-VAP data from the American Community Survey, looking at the Asian population with their voting power, they have 37.4%, which seems to be in line with this overall school district's demographics, with trustee area one containing that one. And trustee area number two has the Hispanic Latino population and the African American population with 13.5 and 10.8%, respectively.
So again, we looked at the C-VAP chart a few pages ago. So district-wide citizen voting age population, the Hispanic Latino population is about 10%. So in this map, you know, and that population is relatively spread out evenly across the district, but in this map, area two gets up to 13.5%. So that's a three-point increase, but, or 30% from the original increase. So not a ton of increased influence, but still some. The African American population, C-VAP district-wide is about five and a half, so it almost doubles in area two on this map. And then district-wide, the Asian C-VAP population is about 25%. So this increases it to 37, although there are others that get up into the mid 40.
Now, this would be map number two, and the goal of this map was to increase the voting power for the other protected classes to allow for the, again, greater voting power. And this one achieves a variance of 6.4% with the highest being trustee area number four and the lowest being trustee area number five. And as you can see here, again, trustee area number two has the greater for the Hispanic Latino and the African American population at 14.1% and 12% with, along with trustee area number three, having the Asian population being at 44%, which again, gives a greater voting power of almost nearly double for the African American and a bit over 40% for the Hispanic Latino and a little over, I would have to say about 80% for the Asian population and trustee area number three for their voting power within this map scenario. Now, this would be map number three, which would again give the same type of voting power for the protected classes. Again, this one has a little bit higher variance at 6.8% with the highest being for trustee area number four and the lowest being trustee area number five. And again, if we were to take a look at the Hispanic Latino and the African American population in trustee area number two, again, they have an increased voting power with the Asian population and trustee area number three being at 44.4%. Now, this would be map number four.
So I haven't been talking about the proposed sequencing, but I want to emphasize that, just on one of the maps, for example. As part of the process, the Board has to both pick a map option and then set the election cycles for each of the trustee areas. The areas are, you know, a seat on the board, area one, two, three, four, five. It's not a, I do a particular person. So prospectively moving forwards, you know, area one on this particular map, for example, I propose have a 2024 election. That's based on where a lot of you live now, just so that we don't have multiple people running in an area where other folks already live, so that the goal is to get one per area as soon as possible. So the Board has to pick the sequencing and propose it to the county. So looking at this map, for example, the reason why area three, which is red, and area four, which is blue, are designated as proposed 2026, really starts off in area four, which is blue, where trustee Howard and Raymond live. Both of their terms expire at the same time in 2026. So it wouldn't make sense to make that area open for election in 2024 that we would have three trustees living there, then only two living in the other four areas. So that doesn't make a lot of sense. That's why that one's 2026. Similarly, the other three areas, purple, green, and yellow, which is five, two, and one respectively, those trustees' terms expire at the end of 2024. And so we've designated those to be open for election then as well. And so in 2026, rather than having two trustees in the blue area, one will be elected from the red area. You'll end up with one in each area. So that's in a nutshell, how the sequencing is created. The Board has some discretion, but again, our recommendation is not to have an election where someone with longer term still has term left, because then you're automatically forcing an extra area to be unrepresented for longer.
Now, when we take a look at the overall population variance with this map compared to the prior two, this one does decrease to 5.8% with the highest being trustee area, area number five, and the lowest being trustee area number one at 2.5% and 3.4%, respectively. Again, much like the prior three maps, the Hispanic Latino, African American, and the Asian population have approximately the same population components in trustees' areas two and three, respectively. And so over here is just the four map scenarios, just juxtaposed right next to each other for comparison sakes, for everyone to take a look at or contrasting in comparison. And I will leave this here just for a couple minutes while Jonathan talks.
I'll come back. I'll end with going back to this slide so I can just stay up for everyone to see. Couple more things here. First, these maps do not change the district's boundaries. They do not change where anybody goes to school. It just really changes who can run for Board, when and how those candidates get elected. Everyone still owes a duty to the entire district as a Board Member, not just the folks who live in the same area as a potential candidate would. As I mentioned earlier, this is the second map public hearing, fourth overall public hearing. The fifth and final public hearing will be two weeks from tonight. And after that public hearing, after the community can provide comment, then the Board will ultimately be adopting one of these map options. I'll note that maps don't have to stay the same. There can be suggestions tonight that we make changes to. We make, I don't know, a map 4A or a map five, depending upon what the suggestions are, if any. Those have to be published seven days before the Board picks it. So to be considered on the 28th, it would have to be published or posted on the website by June 21st. So this is sort of the last real chance to make suggestions for change so that they could be potentially drawn in time to be considered on the 28th. As the Superintendent mentioned, the website is an excellent resource. It has FAQs. It's constantly updated with information, has the maps, and actually an interactive way for you to comment on the maps that you like for your thought exchange. I'll go back to this slide, but what I'm going to do is read some of those comments so that everyone hears them.
Before you do, I just wanted to read the statement about public comments, if that's okay. So as part of this public hearing, members of the public may submit comments on the establishment of voting area boundaries for the new trustee voting areas that will be established as part of the district's transition from an at-large election system to a bi-trustee area election system. Speakers will be given three minutes to make comments on this matter and this matter only. We have received 22 comments that you're going to read out. And we have one comment in the room. Are there any comments online, Amy? Okay, please proceed.
I was going to say, these are comments from the thought exchange.
And to the extent that there's a
Thought exchange.
There's a lot of comments. Some of them range from just, I like this map. And some of them are, here's what I like or don't like, or some of them are, why can't we do this? So to the extent there's questions, I'll try to answer them as we go or share thoughts. Otherwise, I will just generally read them or do my best to understand them, because the way thought exchange works, it's not the, you know, it doesn't necessarily show, it doesn't read the way that it possibly should. So for example, one or four, that's how I'm understanding. So this person likes map one or map four because I'm assuming two or three have shapes with weird bottlenecks for the area just east of Redwood Road. And again, I think we, you know, one of the reasons for that is the weird census block shape that connects, if you look at two and three, how yellow extends kind of northeast, and that's just kind of how the shape of the census block is, but that's the comment. So they like one and four, don't like two and three for that reason. "I prefer maps that equally divide up schools. I firmly believe that no single school should have a representative only for that school. We have had Board members in the past that only focus on their school and disregard others. It's important to have equal representation across all schools." Very fair comment. I'll note that the actual physical location of any actual school site really is irrelevant in this process. And again, and as you all know, there's nine elementary schools. The shapes of those attendance areas vary. And so just because a school is in an area doesn't mean that folks who go to that school are all living in that same area. They could be in others. And there are pros and cons for that. You know, a con would be, obviously, you're splitting up an attendance area. A pro is that that means that there are more representatives who have students in their area who go to multiple schools. So again, just that's kind of as part of the Board's discretion of what you like. No preference on map, but curious what happens if you don't have someone within those boundaries interested in being a school Board Member. So let's say that, you know, nobody runs from an area. That's the process there for filling that vacancy is the same as it is now, except the Board has to appoint from someone who lives in that area. So to the extent that there isn't someone who runs for a seat when it's open, and it looks like there's not going to be a candidate, I assume the district would do outreach to try to find folks who are qualified to run for Board. Someone else says, "I don't like any of the maps. The focus on the map should be based upon similar population as well as neighborhood elementary schools. Why not follow the existing school maps?" Again, a great thought, there are nine elementary school attendance areas and five trustee areas. They're all varying shapes and sizes, may not work with the census blocks, and also may not work with where some of the concentrations are, but where some of the concentrations are, but a fair thought and maybe something to consider for part of the map. This person likes draft one, seems to divide the areas more equally among groups and along streets. Next person also likes map one, seems like it divides the community fairly. And four seems similar to one, so they like four, two. Next person likes four and one. Next person likes one because of the population balance and the lines look like they're drawn fairly. None of the maps divide, this is again hard to catch on, but I think what they're saying is that none, they don't like any of the maps because all of the maps divide the Stanton Elementary School attendance boundaries in half while other schools remain intact. And so that seems suboptimal to this person. And if you look kind of right where Stanton is, usually that's where the purple and green line is. I think Chris will ultimately talk about that tonight, that that's, you know, the green area tended to be the one that had the largest Hispanic Latino C V app and also the African American C V app. I believe that's one of the reasons that line is there. Next person, map one, because they like the number of constituents being, you know, the variance being low. Couple other kind of map one votes because they're, you know, the variance. Again, and Chris talked about this, but map one was drawn to do just that. But it did focus a little bit less on the citizen voting age population that we know can be increased than some of the others. Map one seems the most balanced. I don't like any is the next person's comment. I don't feel the area I live in is well represented by the areas that is joined in with any of the maps. Next person prefers map two because map one splits the area where more isolated rural students live into two pieces. Map two gives a stronger voice to those families who live in the hills and canyon and via their representative. Next comment is, if you include the neighborhood elementary schools as a first guide, we'll ensure that communities of interest will be retained. The increased racial representation will be apparent if you follow this model. Next comment is map four, because it best follows natural divisions of city neighborhoods. Next comment, I prefer map two. I think it best represents the community I belong to. Next comment, map two seems fair based on the school boundaries. Next one, map two, I prefer this population distribution. Next one, scenario three. This is my second choice regarding population distribution. And the last one is I'm worried school attendance areas are being broken up. Cohesive leadership is important. So some just straight up map selection, some with rationale and some with questions. You know, votes for every single one of the maps. And wanted to share that with the board and the community so that everyone could hear and, you know, have that understanding as we move forwards. Also, trustee Kuziak's not here tonight, but he made some suggestions today that essentially are looking to try to kind of create north-south strips through the district, which is something that if the board would like, Chris can look at, see if we want to create a fifth option or, you know, a map one A or four A option from that. If desired, again, we would really still focus on C V app and obviously equal population, but you know, it kind of ends up being, you know, four quadrants and then the eastern side of the district. And so I think what trustee Kuziak is trying to say is what if we have a few north-south strips instead of kind of four groupings, which is something we can look at if the board would like us to try to do that before the deadline. With that public comment, we're here to help and answer, and of course, board questions too.
If it's a question you want to ask, but if it's a comment, I want to get public comment first. Let's do your questions now and then we'll wait for your comments later.
Now we can hear me, sorry. I don't know, it might be a comment I'm getting in my head about it.
Just ask the question.
Could we please see a map that is based on school attendance zones? I'm making that request, I guess, of us and of you based on input I've received from community members over the past couple of days. And obviously, you know, the comments we're seeing through the thought exchange. So that would be question number one.
Yes, we can, if the board kind of, you know, collectively gives that loose direction, Chris can make a map like that. It's not going to be perfect. There will be some attendance areas that get split up. It just has to happen based on how they're shaped and also based on where the protected class concentrations are. But to the extent that we can try to keep most of them together or at least close, we can try to do that in one of the maps.
I would like to see it. I think that, you know, statute really requires us to put in the forefront this idea of communities of interest. And, you know, that is the number one example of communities of interest, you know, for this purpose.
I do want to hear our board comment before we kind of decide on that. I just want to make sure our public has a voice before we vote on anything.
Sure, of course. And this is a question kind of just about our process. You know, I know that we are statutorily required to follow the timeline that we've been following on this. I had asked at one of our meetings much earlier on, but we didn't really go anywhere with this question, but I just want to raise it again. What would happen at this point in time if we were to go to plaintiff's counsel and just say, hey, listen, where we have concerns about, you know, low participation by the public or low input, you know, from the public, and we want to really hit engagement a little bit harder before we pick one of these maps. But we're clearly on the path. We are committed. You know, we'll sign a stipulation that we're doing it. You know, to go through this process before 2024. I don't know. I'm just, they can get in my head. Is there room for us to do that? I'm concerned because, you know, you guys read off the 22 comments. That's 22 participants who commented on thought exchange. I'm not sure how many people actually participated in the thought exchange, but if 22 commented, I'm not imagining it's much more than that. When I did the thought exchange, it was like maybe 70. And that, you know, that's not a big number for our district. Considering the number of people who live in Castro Valley and the number of constituents that we serve and represent. I'm just, I'm just a little concerned about the level of involvement.
Well, we'll let him respond to the legalese, but I'll just respond. The board decided five zero to move forward with this and there would be financial fees. And we already talked about how, when we're in negotiations with teachers, it's probably not the best to spend a lot of money. But I will let the legalese.
Trustee Raymond's original question was, what happens if we want to do this longer than the 90-day window that we're in from when the board adopted the resolution? The answer is, a 90-day window exists. The district could enter into an agreement with the prospective plaintiffs to extend that by another couple of months. However, that would require an agreement. And so that could have them say, sure, but I want to see you draw it this way. Or, yeah, we'll give you three more months, but fire your demographer and hire someone that we want you to pick. So or they might just say, great. It's really hard to tell what they'll do, but they could put conditions on it. It's atypical to get that kind of extension, I'd say, in my experience. But it can be done. It's in the law. I've done it once. The other thought is, 22 is actually kind of a lot for this process, again, based on my experience as well. I've done a couple dozen transitions and some range from having zero public input whatsoever. I think the most public input I ever saw was in Fremont. And it was mainly because there was a concern about wanting to have another high school somewhere else. And so that process kind of was hijacked into the C V area process. But I'm sorry, Dublin. But the bottom line is this really doesn't impact people on an everyday basis, the way that a lot of other issues do. And so sometimes folks participate, sometimes they don't. We want them to. We're trying to encourage that. But if they don't, unless they're thinking of running for board or want someone to run for board, it doesn't necessarily matter as much to them as it may. But we can, of course, try to find ways, and we're trying to, social media, et cetera, to get folks to give feedback. If the board does want to extend the time, we can negotiate with plaintiff's counsel as well.
I wanted to ask Ms. Khyer if there is any information about how many people or any of that analytic, like.
How many people participated in the thought exchange?
Yeah, so you have 22, but you have 72 people who've already looked. And it's not, as you said, it's really not unusual. It's actually, I mean, there are lots of things we put on our website or send home or do and hardly get anybody. So I just wanted to.
I am going to now call up Peter Rosen for public comment. Peter, welcome. You have three minutes once Amy sets you up.
Good evening. So I have a lot to say, but I guess I only have three minutes, so I'll try and cover this pretty quick. I also would like to see increased outreach. I'm really concerned that you had a that there was a meeting on Monday that was like this, that everyone gets three minutes to speak, and then there's a second one. And I would have preferred it to be done like other recent redistricting is done, sorry. That are workshops, that there's a chance that you would have public input and a chance to move some of this because the website does not allow for that. It has a limited number of characters to make comments about it. And that doesn't help. So that being said, I would love it if there was additional outreach. In addition, because of these 22 comments, my assumption is that that might be 10 or 11 people. Because some of us may have commented more than once on the same thing, which is what's allowed. But be that as it may, I have a concern with the prioritization of equal population. And I would ask that what would happen is that you focus more on the, on the community of interest. And then, and as trustee Raymond mentioned, I think that we have traditional neighborhoods that are seen as are coy. And what we should be doing is we should be focusing on those with a higher tolerance for a variance of the population. If the, if the variance is up to 10%, maybe we should be shooting for seven instead of point one. You know, shoot for a seven or eight percent variance in population if it preserves a neighborhood. I think that that would actually retain some community character, which is what I think people want. On some of these maps, I have people that I see are that live in Columbia or that would be representing people that are over by Lake Chabot, which is, or, you know, that's crazy to me. They don't have the same bus issues. They don't have the same density issues. They don't have the same age of facilities issues. I think that it would help if we adjust some of that. And I would love to have a workshop. And then lastly, outreach, I think that you can always do more outreach and I would encourage a letter to the forum, talking about a potentially an additional workshop within the next two weeks that would be out there that we can get the word out and then make a full court press to put things out. Send it out to all the community members, not just the people that have kids in the district. Because most of the people that live in the district don't have kids that are currently going to school here. So thanks.
Thank you, Peter.
Going to say, we have had it in the forum from the beginning. And there's, you know, they're actually here as well to put more information in the forum. But we actually worked with the forum before we got started. So it's been there.
All right. So the board, there were two, actually three requests, because Dolly, last time you had a request for a map. So I think that we need to discuss as a board and vote of, are we okay with these three additional maps? And the first option is, Dolly, can you describe the map that you requested before?
Oh, sorry. I forgot to mention that we did look into that. Sorry, I should have mentioned that in preparation. One of the, at the last meeting, sorry, I'll just, if I could take this now, just because we're on it. Trustee Adams asked, you know, essentially, if you look at the area one, which on most of the maps is yellow, but in the map one, it's red, but kind of that that kind of southeast area of central Castro Valley. And the boundaries right, yeah, essentially kind of cross over the Crow Canyon curve and go further east. And so we looked at that, just to see, our suspicion was again, the other side of Crow Canyon, as we talked about on the slide of the C V app is like that bright blue, heavily populated area. So we didn't create it, but we looked at it to see what it would do. And what it does is it knocks down the C V app in depending on the map, the furthest east trustee area from mid 40s down to the mid 30s. And so it does essentially split up a concentration, which is why in most of the maps it isn't, isn't on there. So what it ends up doing is dropping it from 44 to 35%. And that would be the lowest one of the options available.
Isn't that about the same as map one percent?
Same as map one. And as we were saying, map one was created purely about trying to balance the population less about the C V app. But because that we know now that we can get into the mid 40s, we should probably try to keep that area intact.
So Gary? Here, go ahead. Go ahead, Gary.
I just want to make one comment. I mean, you know, maybe a couple. First of all, we don't want to be doing this, but we have to. The second one is, I don't think there's any perfect solution here. You know, so I heard it mentioned here, trustee Raymond mentioning that we could keep the school boundaries for, that's what we asked you not to do in a previous meeting. And the rationale, and there's no perfect solution here, but the rationale of not doing that was to make sure that trustees are not responsible for one school or two schools to try to spread out our responsibility. Now we're responsible for all of them. But in these cases, it might be tempting for me to be the trustee from Proctor since I live up there. And, you know, maybe I would short another school, but if I had a piece of multiple school areas, that would give me an incentive to be good to the other schools or to keep them in mind. I mean, I'm hoping we'll all be high-minded and remember that we have 14 schools in the district or whatever the number of campuses are. But that's one of the rationales, and which is better? I don't know. You know, you can make an argument either way. But I just wanted to make that point that you can make an argument both ways. I personally like, I would like to be responsible for everything. But it isn't going to be quite that way now.
I wanted to check, there are now two that we are voting on. Thank you for that additional context so that the public is aware of the other that we considered. So
It's not a formal vote. You're just essentially giving us direction. So
Well, there needs to be at least three of us to, yeah. So raise of hands, since it's not a formal vote, of who's okay with looking at a vertical option? Looking at a vertical geographic option that Mike suggested, that trustee Kuziak?
I can speak to that if you'd like. I think that it would or the goal is to look at a map that kind of breaks up the socioeconomic makeup of Castro Valley or mixes it better, if that makes sense. You know, in the the higher you go in the hills, the more signs of houses, et cetera. The lower down, the more renters we have, or, and actually, that's another question I had, is like, have we, have you been able to take into account? You know, within the population boundaries that you're putting in these potential maps. You know, we got higher density of renters, higher density of homeowners, socioeconomic status, things like that. And I think that the goal of that potential map would be to show, you know, more diversity of socioeconomic status.
The way I understand it, trustee Raymond said is highway to the hills, strips north. So let's say we'll call it like a west of Lake Chabot and then kind of between Lake Chabot and Redwood North, and then it's kind of strips like that. I'm not saying it's a good or bad idea. I'm just saying that's, and I think how I understand the request to be, to connect different socioeconomic groups. Again, not saying, well, we're just trying to explain what I think the request was.
I mean, for me personally, I don't mind seeing another map. I think my concern with that map is it's going to break up our communities of interest for sure. And that, to me, is a problem. Does anybody, Gary?
So let's talk about the timing for a second. Where are we on the timeline here? We had, we had a pretty tight timeline, 45 days from when we voted that one resolution. And we're deep into that now. And I believe the maps have to be posted, you told me for seven days, I think, like that.
The maps had to be posted for seven days before they can be considered. So June
Where are we?
So we are, you're 14 days from you picking a map and we are seven days from all the maps having to be posted on the website. Where we are in the window of kind of safety from the resolution is, I think we have till about mid-July. So in theory, you know, I think the resolution was done in April at some point. And so I think July is day 90. Although again, you've got July 4th in there, then it's the summer for part of that. But in theory, you could, if you wanted to add another meeting or two afterwards, but the, the original plan was to do the meetings now. And so June 21st would be the last day to create them.
So I'm okay with the two extra. So I'm okay with the two extra options, given that we have seven days for them to recreate the map. Um, I'm not comfortable stretching out the timeline because people go on vacation, kids aren't in school. I really, we're less participation. Um, so do we have at least three people okay with the two additional maps? Okay.
And what, what we'll do is we'll, we'll try to create them. To the extent that they work, we'll, we'll publish them. If they don't, we'll come back and explain why they don't, like we did tonight.
Great.
The Adam suggestion, so um, to clarify, one map that's trying to keep attendance areas together, again, not all of them will be, but trying to keep some together to the extent that is possible. Another one with sort of a north-south, um, we call them strips. Um, we will attempt to do that, and to the extent that they work or that they're viable, we'll create them and post them. And if they're not, we'll explain why.
I, I think I only heard this was about the first, the long one, right? Not the.
I asked for both.
Oh, for both, okay.
Okay with both, just to make it easy?
This.
Yeah, yeah, that with the two.
Yeah, okay.
Gary, you had a comment?
Question, uh, with that, when would that new map, when would we see that, when would we review it and so forth? Would that be at our second meeting in June?
Yes, so what I'm hearing you say is, the two extra maps you asked, they have to go and work on it as soon as possible. And they have to be available in seven days before, because we have to post it. However, I also heard if it doesn't work out based on those criterias, you're not going to bring a map. You're just going to say why it didn't work, just like the last time. Because it didn't fit, it didn't actually follow the rules that we're supposed to be following.
Yeah, well, we have the time to do it. And, and we'll receive it, and so will the community seven days prior to our next meeting on the twentieth.
It'll be, to the extent that they can be created, they'll be posted on the website by June twenty-first.
Okay. Well, thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight, your comments. Um, the public hearing, uh, to receive public testimony concerning proposed trustee voting area plans is now closed. And we hope to see your comments on the twenty-eighth. Keep them coming. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. And we will now move on to our next agenda item, our superintendent's report. Superintendent Amati?
Um, yeah, I think, um, just a couple of things. We had outstanding graduations and promotions. I want to thank our, our staff, our principals, some of which who are here, they did a beautiful job. Our students are family, so it was just a great end of the year. Can't believe it's, the year was over. Um, a, a couple of other things, uh, we did another presentation at the Rotary about the, uh, health clinic. And our, uh, goal is to actually, actually open that, uh, the health clinic at Castro Valley High School in August. So it's pretty exciting. Um, wanted to um, share that today, we actually had a, uh, our county superintendent's meeting at Adobe. I wanted to, uh, it's a, it's really a beautiful space to have meetings, and everyone loved it. And then from there, we walked actually to the market to have lunch. And it's nice to have the support of the community and the businesses to support us. Last thing I wanted to say, we had a really great meeting with the sheriff's office. And uh, our sheriff actually attended along with his team, her team, and our um, secondary principals were there. And we have had a lot of great conversations about some of the things that we are doing together, and we're going to continue to do together. Um, and now I um, just wanted to, um, this is, uh, Dr. Ryman's last board meeting with us. Uh, so um, I want to just say a couple of things. I think it would take me hours and hours to really describe what Jason has done here uh, for us. But he is an amazing leader, um, has done so much to move us in the right direction. Every great thing that we have seen the last few years has his fingerprints on it. Um, and, and his team, uh, just, you know, curriculum, professional development, students, anything that has to do with how we support our students. Um, it's, you know, he has an amazing experience and knowledge. Um, he's been a fantastic thought partner. Uh, and I, I think in this position, you really depend on the amazing team you work with. And I've been absolutely fortunate to work, you know, on my executive team with Dr. uh, Zamora, Ms. Chan, and, and Dr. Ryman. Uh, he's been a great colleague and, and an absolutely wonderful friend for life. Uh, Hayward is extremely lucky to have him. And I wish him all the luck in the world, and he knows we're right here, uh, supporting him as always. But I just, I can't even thank him enough. And I just wanted to say, um, that the, what you have done here will impact students for years to come. And I, I really thank you for everything you have done. Um, so I wanted to just, we have a little plant for your office. Some of our team members are here.
Dr. Ryman, would you like to say a couple of words?
Didn't prepare anything, I didn't expect this. Um, just to say thank you to Castro Valley, to the community, especially to Parveen and to the board, uh, for bringing me here. I've learned so much. Um, I've learned, most importantly, um, that when you have a group of people who are really dedicated to impacting the community, to doing the work, to viewing this as work to improve schools, not just a stepping stone to something else. Um, you can really do, make market change, you can really change your entire community. Um, and those of us who are most dedicated to education view our work as social activism, changing the world, improving the outcomes uh, for young people and their families, one student at a time. Parveen, you exemplified that. I can't imagine a, a better mentor, friend, um, to learn with. And so thank you for bringing me on board and for teaching me so much. And to the board, uh, for the work that you've done in showing courage. Um, and to the community and all of my colleagues, thank you for being there and doing the work every day. So it's been an amazing time, I'm excited to go to Hayward, um, but I'm going to miss Castro Valley deeply. Thank you.
I know there are a few of us who'd like to say a few things, so we're going to take, um, I'm going to give us, tell seven-ten, just to give us a few extra minutes, just so we can take some time and.
Can I say one thing I forgot to say?
Of course.
The educational services department is going to be in amazing hands with Nia Rashishi, um, who's been a great partner as well.
With that, we will take a ten-minute break. Please say your goodbyes, and we'll see you at seven-ten.
Little pass up there. It's a little different on my phone, but we're going to go ahead and get started again just so we can keep on moving. And since everybody's back in the room. So thank you. We are going to move on to item six. Do we have any of our? Yes, we do. Welcome. We have CSCA. Welcome Connie.
We don't have a whole lot to report. Thank you for time tonight, though. I would like to start off by just thanking Mr. Ryman for a service to our community into our district. What I do for our district is as the CSCA president, he and I do not get a whole lot of meetings together, but the ones that we did do together. I felt I was heard. I felt he understood what we were talking about in terms of the needs of our our union. And I just want to let you know, we appreciate your support and and the time that you've given just our whole community, not just our our members in this district. I will give you guys a brief update about our end of the year. It went very smoothly. Our classified employees, as always, showed up and got the jobs done that were necessary so that our students could have a successful end of the year and graduation program for all levels of our school district. I will just give you a brief update as well on what's been going on with our contract negotiations. Our teams, the two sides representing the district and and our CSCA members were able to agree on some terms relating to the transportation re opener and to language in relation to higher steps on our salary scale based on education and experience. However, we still remain pretty far apart on our all other proposals that we brought forth to the table for negotiation. And at this time, we would just like to encourage the board to encourage your negotiations committee to bring back to the table a proposal that our members can be happy with and that our members will be able to vote yes on. Because unfortunately, what we were ended up with as of May 22 was not a proposal that our members would accept. And so at that time, I would just encourage you guys, please come back to the table with something that we can all work on together. That's more realistic. And at that, with that, I wish everyone a good summer, and I hope we all have a good break. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. And just a reminder to folks, CSCA is still at work. They're going to be cleaning a lot of facilities. They're going to be getting us ready for the next school year. So just want to thank CSCA for their service and continued efforts in our district. Thank you, Connie. Here's Mark on the line. We will move on to items. Public comment for items not on the agenda, and we have three online and one in the room. We'll take the one in the room first. Peter Rosen, if you could please join us upfront.
Good evening again. I'm wearing a different hat right now. I'm coming to you as a member of the board for the Hayward Area Recreation Park District, and I'm here to apologize for not being here at the previous meeting when the joint use agreement for the Canyon Fields and the and the investment that we're doing together in the collaborative process and years worth of work that have gone into this and things that predate my board membership. But I was here in this room when we first talked about it as a community member and I want to say thank you. I think it's a great process. I think this project is going to benefit the community long after all of us are here. This is something that's going to have a lasting impression. I think it's going to help all aspects of the community. I think that it's going to help with equity. It's going to help with a huge issue with not just, you know, safety of the fields, but I think that what's going to happen is the amount of use and the encouraging the use of athletics and teamwork and everything else that would that would come with with soccer is is going to be great. And I think that the fact that we're going to be doing this with softball fields and baseball fields, it's going to help the people that are students there. It'll help the community and it'll help all of our rec leagues. I'm just, I'm ecstatic. I'm glad it's being done. And I want to thank you for all your persistence, particularly to Gary and Lavender and and Parveen for being there with me on this stretch. So thank you, everyone. Thanks.
Thank you, Trustee Rosen. Amy, I will move us to comments online. Janice, welcome.
Hi, thank you for taking my comments. I just want to kind of seek support in establishing a Mandarin immersion program with the district. I think the current that the district is currently doing a really great job with the Spanish immersion, and I would love to extend the offer to Mandarin. And then speaking to some of the parents within the community, they like were interested if it's something that the district can offer. And it's also like a poll. It's also a program that's being offered on neighborhood cities in the East Bay and as well as in like Tri Valley. So there are something. So I saw the art demand within like the area. So I would like to get your guidance if there's anything I can do to kind of get this going like with your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. No worries. Ray, welcome to our meeting.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Ray Murphy. I have a student at Jensen Ranch, and I have a middle schooler that's going to be in Creekside. And I'm addressing the board because I just wanted to make sure that everyone's aware of the busing such situation that's going on with Castro Valley Unified School District. And I wanted to address the concern from a lot of the parents I'm hearing. They're they have a lot of concern about what the forecast of more routes might be, or if there's more drivers. So they had the lottery system on Monday, and I liked that it was proactive. It's done early. So we understand like what's going on. I like that he had a little cute bus and it was he was pulling a little little numbers from. However, Route A services nine stops Creekside Canyon, Castro Valley High School and Route A. Only he only pulled 30 kids for that entire route. And there is a total of 137 kids that are not going to get on a bus as this moment. I don't know what's going to happen in the future with the transportation system or the bus drivers or the busing system, but I just wanted to address the board and make sure that people are on top of it. And the four or five people you have working at the Transportation Department, if that's their job to get another bus driver or get it, get more kids on that route, I'm sure the parents would greatly appreciate it. There's it's going to create a lot of hardship for these parents who are working and trying to get their kids to school and where everybody's going to be scrambling to try to find alternative ways to do this. So I have trust that people are going to light a fire and try to take care of these 137 kids on the waitlist. I'm hoping that by addressing you guys that you will look into it and make sure that's being addressed with the Transportation Department. They're doing their job job diligently. So I am, I'm really hoping that this is taken care of and that these families will not be left in the in the dark or not in the dark, but out out in the rain, not having a bust. So I thank you for listening and I might I give my time up. Thanks.
Thank you, Ray. All right. Well, thank you to our public commentators this evening. Harvey?
I know we don't like respond back and have conversations, but just the information for families who are a part of that lottery. We're doing that just in case we do not get enough bus drivers. So we just wanted to be careful because that's how many bus drivers we have. And I want to thank CSCA for working with us to actually change the job description so that we can get most more bus drivers because now they can work full time. So yeah, it's on our radar and we're just looking for bus drivers. So this I wanted to say this also, if anybody's listening, and if you know anybody who can be a bus driver, please send them over. Send them over to us because we really do need bus drivers. So thank you.
Thank you. We will move now to item eight, our consent agenda, and this is an action item.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Yes.
I will vote yes. The motion passes 4-0. We now get to have some reports, discussion and action items. And we're really excited to have one of our partners here tonight. Castro Valley Educational Foundation to provide an annual update. Harvey?
Thank you. We have our wonderful partner and the president for CV. Yeah. Mr. Suresh is going to give us a a report on this year. I want to, before you get started, I really want to thank you for the event and all you have done to support our school district and the wellness programs in our district. So thank you for being here.
Great. Thanks so much. And I can you guys hear me? Okay. Great. I just want to again, thanks for all the support from the Castro Valley Unified School District and and the board. You guys have been great supporters since my time on being the foundation. We had Lavender and then we had Michael. We had also Sarah briefly on our board, and then we now have Dolly, who's been just fantastic. So all three of you have been really great supporters. You came to our meetings, you came to our events. So it certainly does not go unnoticed and and we very much appreciate it. My our vice president, fortunately, Sarah can be her shed other commitment. And I'll try to keep my remarks really brief because I know it's a long write. If you could flip to the next slide, Amy. Oh, I can do it. Fantastic. Even better. Just just our mission statement. So we are here to promote and enhance educational excellence. Plus, learning and sponsor educational events that complement classroom instruction and recognize academic achievement. It's all sounds kind of like a boilerplate. The way I kind of described things, we try to sort of fill in some of the white spaces. Obviously, most parents tend to support the schools that their kids go to. It's kind of obvious. I certainly did when my kids were at the schools. But we try to kind of be, I think Gary said it pretty nicely earlier, right? Like here for all the schools, not just a school. And that's kind of our our motto is when we try to support a fill in the white spaces. I just wanted to highlight really our our core activities, scholarships. We've hit a record for four consecutive years. We just awarded over $121,000 in scholarships for the last academic year, primarily to Castro Valley High School students. We've actually also started a new scholarship over at Redwood High School and we and thanks to supporters there. Pretty cool. You can see that we had 200 app 200 applicants. So I think we've done a really nice job of just, we keep adding things, whether it's along. You know, racial diversity lines, like, you know, African American scholarships. We do. We do stuff for musicians. We do stuff for student athletes. We do stuff for social justice warriors. We do stuff even for people interested in 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 politics. Dolly was instrumental in starting a sort of a democratic club scholarship on this year. So it's I kind of viewed as like we have something for everybody, which is really nice. It's not just like, oh, my God, I got to have a 4.5 and I'm going to, you know, UCLA. It's like, we have plenty of scholarships for for people that are in, you know, in arts and so many other kind of things, which I really liked. We have a lot of need based scholarships, too. In fact, the bulk of them are. So that's one thing. Innovative grants. Again, we tried to fill in requests from mostly from teachers for for things maybe that the school just can fund. We always have really innovative of things, whether it's sort of outdoor education or or science things that are fun to do. Our big annual fundraiser that we just recently held is called Spring for Education. We were close to selling out a few tickets short, but again, that was to raise funds for the wellness programs across the district, which I think was a hopefully successful fun event. Again, thanks for many of you that attended the event. And I'm pleased to announce we haven't given you guys the money, but we're going to give you guys $25,000. We raised very close to that. So we're giving you a a check and Mary Ann and Meadows, her team obviously was there spoke and sent a very touching email, which the board has seen. And we just wanted, again, be really thankful to kind of get back to those programs. I'm going to save that gray bar for last. And then just again, some of the other things that we do, we do. We like to partner with a lot of organizations. That's really important. We partner with Rotary. Actually, that's let me go to the next slide. You can kind of see some Castro Valley Arts Foundation, right? Mary Ann is somebody we partner with. We have a board member that's on our board and on their board. Rotary, we know Rotary really well. We were lucky for Rotary to recognize us as their grand marshal this year. We were at the barbecue Axe and Brew. Castro Valley Women's Club has been our probably longest standing supporter on on the scholarships for us and a huge partner for us. Castro Valley Community Alliance, obviously, the Olympiad. We kind of really helped them quite a bit. Actually, we did a promotion for them that helped them send their kids to nationals. And actually, a lot of our kind of core members really helped them out. So they were really appreciative. And finally, the the chamber. So this isn't everybody. We just kind of pick a lot of the the partners. And this is, we're kind of a small and mighty crew. We don't have a lot. We're always looking to recruit more people. We do have a good set of volunteers that helps with events. We're certainly looking for other board members. So if you ever know anybody that would love to help us, that would be fantastic. So I want to close. Friends of education is a word that we haven't done, you know, during COVID. Not that we didn't think that was deserving. It just was really hard, a hard time, and we were probably a little bit distracted. You guys were a little bit distracted. We definitely didn't want it to resurrect the word post COVID. And I know there's already been quite a few accolades, but we had a conversation our board and we we discussed a number of people that we thought would be worthy. And but this is not like a public election. This is really our board. We obviously talked to Superintendent Amati to make sure she's okay with our selection. But we thought Jason, Dr. Jason Ryman would be the best person for the award this year. I won't repeat all the accolades. They've all been said, but I think you have a chance to get some friendly rivalry between Hayward and and Castro Valley. You know, I find that, you know, when you have a friendly rivalry, not a not a polarizing one, it can uplift both, right? It's fun to kind of uplift both districts and they could they could they could become better together. So hopefully, maybe Castro Valley and and Hayward will partner even more closely together on different ideas of academic things. Maybe maybe one district alone can't do an initiative. I mean, talk about the Mandarin immersion, right? I don't know. Hard. Hayward doesn't have one Castro Valley, but what if you had one that could both? I don't know. Just I'm throwing ideas against the wall at this point. Thank you so much for supporting the Ed Foundation over these years, and we look forward to supporting you guys in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for everything that you do for our community. And we will move on to report or item 9B, our Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, otherwise known as CBOC Annual Report to the Community. Welcome.
Yes, we're very excited to have our CBOC Chair, Mr. Justin Kemp. He's going to present the annual report to you. And so we're, we also have another member, CBOC member here, and she is the Secretary of CBOC. Carolyn Darcy is right there. So we want to thank her for for supporting Justin as he presents the report.
I was going to say, and Mr. Suresh Bahot was actually our president for quite a few years on CBOC. So thank you.
Good evening. My name is Justin Kemp. I'm the newly appointed Chair of the Major G Citizen Bond Oversight Committee. I'm honored to present the committee's annual report for 2022 of Major G Bond Program. Before I begin, thanks to on behalf of the committee, thanks to the Board of Education, thanks to Superintendent Amati, Assistant Superintendent Judy Chan. thanks to Superintendent Amati, Assistant Superintendent Judy Chan, Director Sharon, Trint Crew, and all the district staff. Their, their commitment and effort is truly appreciated. Also, I want to make sure to thank past members of the Oversight Committee, who actually wrote the report that I'm going to present tonight. Two thousand twenty-two marked the sixth year of the Measure G Bond Program. So far, we have invested over a hundred and thirteen million in upgrading our school sites and completed nearly seventy-six percent of the planned scope. Among the list of accomplishments, new amphitheaters and shade structures have been installed at Independent Marshall Proctor Stanton Elementary. New classrooms placed at Proctor Elementary. Many interior renovation projects were completed, including Canyon Middle School, Vanoye, Marshall and Stanton. We formed an audit for the purpose of verifying the use of funds were within the scope of the Measure G Bond. I can report the audit findings indicated that the district is in full compliance, reinforcing the commitment to transparency and responsible financial management. On a more personal note, having, as someone who gets to frequent all these sites very often, I wanted to say I could personally test to the transformative nature of all of these, the impact that these have in the lives on our students and our teachers. New playground striping, new shade structures for kids during lunchtime, amphitheaters. All of these projects have significantly improved their educational experiences. So, I'm both very grateful to the Castro Valley community and to Castro Valley Unified School District for the support making this possible. Thanks for your time. I'll conclude there and attempt to answer any questions you might have.
We don't have any questions, Justin, but we do thank you for your service and we appreciate your report. Glad to see that we're being fiscally responsible and thank you for holding us accountable. Next, we will move on to item nine C, Proposition Twenty-eight, Arts and Music Education Funding Update. Superintendent Amati?
Yeah, thank you. I have some partners who are going to do this as soon as the PowerPoint is up. We'll get started. So, a, as you know, Proposition Twenty-eight passed in November. And this is a proposition, state proposition, that actually provides funding for school districts outside of general fund, outside of our education budget, outside of Prop ninety-eight. It's out of general fund and it equals to one percent of whatever Prop ninety-eight is. Education budget is. So, right now, although we don't know exactly where our budget ends, we know it's one percent of whatever our budget will be at the state, the education budget. But it's, it's a great opportunity. And I, as I've said before, they have passed, it's passed, but we don't necessarily have to start the program next year. We can spend a whole year just planning and then start the year after. But in this district, I know that your focus is always to do the best we can to support our children. And music and art is so important that waiting another year means that our kids wouldn't have the additional, you know, programs that we could have. This, it has to be additional programs. This has to be, this can't be taking the money and paying for what we already have. It can't, it has to be supplemental, not supplanting what we already have. And eighty percent of the funds have to be used for new programs and new people and staff. So, with that, I know Ms. Rashichi is here. We have a presentation. And then, as we go through, I know Ms. Chan may have some things to add and, and I'll jump in as necessary. But I want to thank Ms. Rashichi. I want to thank Pat, our actually amazing two principals who worked with her on this, Patrick and Affy, who did a great job, as well as our teachers who were on the committee from the beginning and meeting. So.
Thank you Superintendent Amati. So, Nia Rashichi, I am thrilled to be here tonight because we really, as Superintendent Amati said, this is a real opportunity for our students to serve them even better on a, on a daily basis. And so, the only thing that I would add to this slide, because you already talked about the funding and the one percent, is that eighty percent does have to go to staffing and the rest can go to training and materials. So, what did we do? We, when we got this, we were all thrilled, like, yes, arts, yes. And so, we put a committee together and it was made up of our VAPA teachers, site principals, district office staff. And we really met to do a few things, understand what the Prop Twenty-eight legislation said it was and what it wasn't. Discuss really, what's our current status? What do we currently have in place as far as visual and performing arts? And then, like, let's imagine like what it could be, what, what, what could we supplement? And reimagine the arts in Castro Valley Unified School District at every grade span, elementary, middle and high. And then, of course, we have to prioritize because there's limited dollars. We, they're supplement, they're supplemental, but they're not, we don't have a gazillion dollars. Actually, Ms. Chan could tell you exactly how much, how many dollars we have. But we knew we had to come up with priorities as we're reimagining what it could look like. So, we really said, once we had a couple of meetings and really good thought, thought partners, the people really being thoughtful about what is it that is the most important thing that we could do with these additional targeted funds? And so, we came up with, so folks were like, you know, we really need to make sure that our elementary program is robust and comprehensive so that it feeds up into our middle schools. By the time they go to high school, they are the, the most creative and artistic and they have all of these experiences and end up at the higher learning institutes with an amazing skill set. So, really make sure our program at elementary is robust and comprehensive. And then, have some parity between our two middle schools. Some of the things that are happening at Canyon, we want more to happen at Creekside. And then, make some additional sections at the middle, at the secondary schools in general. And then, with all of this work to really make this happen, you need another position. You've got to have some, some other position in place to help organize, manage, lead, professional development, et cetera. And so, you, we all agreed that we needed to have a teacher on special assignment. And that person is in the room. It's Jennifer Jervis, right over there. Yes, we are very blessed to have her on board. And so, not only did we get input from our teachers and principals and district office administrators, we also went out on thought exchange, once again, to get some community input. And what folks said really matched really nicely with what the committee came up with. So, it was like more arts and music, yes, please. And then, please make sure that the kids are, have opportunities to be creative all day, every day. Make sure that we start our music at the earliest elementary levels, not just in fourth and fifth grade. Go earlier and make sure we have qualified staff. We definitely have that. We've been very blessed in that area. Dr. Mora has helped tremendously to make sure that that happens. And then, allow more options at zero period for our middle schools. And when you can, again, upgrade, continue to upgrade our facilities and our equipment. So, I am going to hand it off to my partner, Mr. Principal Hanson Smith, who really, as Superintendent Amati said, we could not have done all the work. We have, we could not have done all the work that has been done to make sure that all of the thinking and planning actually comes together without this gentleman. And so, he's going to tell you about what we actually came up with, the fantastic program that we came up with for elementary. Because that's where most of the work has been to get ready for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The secondary schools are also going to do some things, but they have more things in place around visual and performing arts. So, I'm going to hand it off to Mr. Hanson Smith.
Okay, so, before I talk about what we're going to have next year, I just wanted to remind folks what we currently have and what we've had in years past, specifically at the elementary level. And we've had choir in both fourth and fifth grade and we've had instrumental opportunities for our fifth graders. With the Prop Twenty-eight funds, we've been able to expand that all the way down to first grade and add art at the elementary level as well. So, starting next year, all of our first through third graders will have a rotation of art and music for a total of forty minutes weekly of VAPA or Visual and Performing Arts Instruction. And that'll be a foundation of basic skills with the music classes. That's a combination of vocal singing and instrumental, like foundational practices and so forth. Our fourth grade students will also have a rotation of arts and then choir, starting to specialize a little bit more, learning the foundations of vocal performance for a total of forty minutes weekly of VAPA instruction. And then, our fifth graders have the opportunity to dive a little bit deeper into their music education, getting to choose between band, orchestra or choir every week for forty minutes. And then, they also have an art and musical theater rotation. So, our fifth graders will have a total of eighty minutes of VAPA instruction every week. So, big expansion in the elementary level. We also have our TOSA, as Nia Rashichi mentioned. And she's going to be not only working with our first through fifth graders, making sure that that program gets up and running and we've got a solid standard based curriculum. She's also going to be going down into the TK kindergarten preschool classes to make sure that we have integrated and designated instruction in the arts at those levels as well. So, for the elementary level, our next steps, we've got a schedule pretty much set, which includes both art and music. We had to think about P E R T I, play C V, making sure that all of those pieces fit together, making sure that we had spaces for all of those classes to happen. And we have something set for that. We've got all of our staff hired. We've got three point nine new positions added at our elementary level. We've got them up and running already. Our, our art teachers were at Independence today, working on the curriculum, scope and sequence, getting the room set up. We've identified a place to house their offices, so like a workspace for VAPA teachers at Canyon Middle School. And we're getting that set up with furniture, flexible furniture and so forth. Like I said, we're planning the curriculum instruction details. We're getting our supply list ready. Even though we don't exactly know how much money we have, we're getting that list ready to go. And we're, we're ramping up for next year. We're hoping to start August and September with all of this instruction. And then, of course, we want to have fun and learn and grow and figure out what's going to work the best. At the secondary level, there's a little bit less of expansion because we're playing it safe. But we are going to expand point two zero period core class. So, what that means is that students will have an option to take core class in zero period, freeing up opportunity to take VAPA during the school day, during periods one through six. At Creekside, we're adding a point two drama section and we're also adding a point two choral section to create that parity between the Creekside and, and Canyon programs. And then, thinking forward to the next year, we're going to be looking back at the feedback that we got and trying to make sure that we expand and meet all of those asks that we saw from folks. I'll ask, you guys to come back up here for a question.
Trusty Adams and then Trusty Howard and then Trusty Raymond. We'll go down the line.
Two things. One, one's a comment, one's a question. Question is, do classroom teachers get a prep while their kids are having art and music? Or do they go with them?
Yeah, so technically, the teachers who are teaching are credentialed, so it could be a prep. But we, since this is a part of our agreement with the union, we have to work with our teachers' union to make that happen. So, I don't want to say yes because we have to work with them to have that agreement. But I know we, both, the, the teachers' union and us have that as an interest, for sure. Yeah.
That was my question. The other thing is, I think I saw in high school, were you adding a dance class? Was that right? Did I see that right?
So, in the twenty-four, not for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, but part of the planning during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year will be to add Castro Valley dance into the mix.
That would be really wonderful. I know I actually had ballet or, or dance, you know, when I was in high school and I was always wondering why I never saw it here. So, that will be really wonderful, I think.
Trusty Howard?
I just, a really simple question, just to help me maybe, and I probably should know the answer to this, but I don't. You know, you mentioned forty and eighty minutes of elementary instruction, depending on the grade. How many instructional minutes are there in a week in elementary school? Just for some con, just for some context.
Yeah, there's about like one thousand two hundred and fifty.
I'm sorry?
One thousand two hundred and fifty.
Okay, great. That's, you know, it sounds like one thousand two hundred and fifty, great. Overall, great plan. Thanks very much. It's, sounds terrific.
Okay, just a few questions. I, so first, I'm really excited about this. I really, I'm just, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm an arts background person. I was a theater major in college. I like, I was the docent for fame and for music for minors for years. And I'm just, I'm just so happy that this is not going to be in parents' hands anymore. And, and I guess I'm just, I do want some clarification though on, you know, we're talking a lot about the use of staffing, for instance. And we're talking about like actually certificated teachers are going to be handling this instruction, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I'm, I'm really, it's wonderful. I, you, you guys know better than I do and our TOSA is here. And when I was going through the slides, part of the meeting, one of my thoughts was like, ooh, one TOSA for all those grades, is that enough? And I just, I just, because I don't know.
Well, and I, I know that Jennifer Jervis is here tonight as our TOSA. She's already been doing, so we hired art teachers and music teachers. And it is a team effort. So, it will be a team of teachers working together. And I will also add that Principal Pat Hashen Smith is also going to continue to be greatly involved in helping to make sure that we really develop a program, continue to develop a program that really serves our students well. So, it is a team effort, is not, it will only let, will not only be left on the shoulders of Ms. Jennifer Jervis, although I think she could carry it pretty well.
Okay, that's great. I mean, I guess I have like one last question or sort of comment. I'm really quite glad that we're looking at parity between the two middle schools and what's being offered. Having been a parent at both middle schools, there really is disparity at the, at this time. And I'm wondering, this may be, I don't know if this is a question for this meeting or if it's more for, you know, curriculum planning. But I'm just going to ask it. The exploratory wheel at Creekside, for instance, is very academic and very, it's, it's not creative. And I guess, like, when we're looking at creating that parity, like, how, how do you see it happening? How, how do we, how do we see getting that into the hands of the kids where it's not necessarily just by choice?
So, that really is a separate conversation and we can get you some information on that.
Thank you.
But I wanted to just say a couple of things. Your question about teacher on assignment, is that enough? You always want more, but we have to look at the funding that we had. And one of the other requirements for this money is that it actually is based on the number of students and then unduplicated, correct, at each of the schools. So, in order for us to get a teacher on assignment, we had to take a bit of, you know, money from secondary because there wouldn't be enough money in elementary. But the reason we can justify that is because she will actually be working to make sure that the kids are ready for high school and middle school. So, if you want to add anything.
Yeah, and then, so, thank you, Ms. Amati. So, in terms of expenditure plan, that's required and that's why we're presenting this to you. And in terms, as far as funding, this is included in the May revise that the governor released last month. Nine hundred thirty-three million dollars statewide. For us, it's about one point two million dollars based on the number of students, including the unduplicated count.
Yeah, and the plans, just to finish that, the plans, it doesn't have to be approved by the board. It does need to be, like, we're, we need to make sure that you've heard it, you like it. But basically, each school has that plan and there's like, there's not even a forum for us. We're probably one of a handful in the state who are actually starting. So, they haven't, they don't even have all of that finished. So, once they have that, then you will see a plan on every school's website that's posted.
Thank you.
And I will comment last. I also started out as a fine art major and I went to theater and film. I am not a professional artist. I work in environment, health and safety. Didn't work out for me, but I love it. I, I'm really glad to see that this is taking place. And I really want to thank, you know, this is a great example of Castro Valley storming and forming and working together. A committee of educators and staff got together and stormed in. A committee of educators and staff got together and stormed and formed something that they think is going to be best for the district. Really working, loving to see our educators come and bring us what they think is best. I love seeing this and I love the collaboration. And, and what you mentioned about tracking the health to make sure it's right and being able to pivot and be agile to, to really understand what's working and what's not working for the best education of our students. I really appreciate that, you know? Just because we make a decision, doesn't mean we shouldn't learn from it. And I just want to really appreciate our educators and our staff for coming together, working together and creating really cool art opportunities for our students.
Couple of things, I do want to say, it was honestly like hours and hours and hours and days of their time as well as, I know at the end, as we were, as you were coming up with the, with the plan for elementary, our music teachers, our two music teachers who really worked hard with you to collaborate and make this happen. I do want to say this, we have our plan. We do have to wait for the, the state for the funding. We know that it's one percent of ninety, probably ninety-eight. I do want to say we have a plan, but we may not be able to start right off the bat at the beginning of the year, depending on the other parts that we have to put together. So I just want us to know, we are going to have it and our goal is to start right off that. But just in case it doesn't happen and it's like a month or a month and a half, it's because of all the other things we have to do, including working with our bargaining.
Just want to say without any creatives in the room, who storyboarded this out? Because I know there has to be one somewhere. Thank you for everything that you've done. Really appreciate it. Look forward to seeing what takes place. We will now move on to item nine D. And I will open our public hearing for our local control accountability plan, or otherwise known as LCAP, and hand it over to Dr. Ryman for our presentation.
Great, thank you so much. And we do have a few slides. So for anyone who hasn't seen a presentation on the LCAP before or been to any of the community meetings, you should know that the LCAP governs local control funding formula dollars, specifically funds that are meant to support unduplicated pupils, those being foster youth, students who are coming from socio-economically disadvantaged households, as well as English learners. For us, the LCAP though also is basically a representation also of our strategic directions, but in the format of a budget and a few narratives. So the purpose of the LCAP is to provide overall guidance in terms of our programs, specifically looking at programs that are adding to the core instructional program meant to support unduplicated pupils, but also all historically underserved students. It's got a singular focus on making sure that all students are successful, making sure that we have the types of supports academically, socially and emotionally, as well as ways to support families and parents through the process. The purpose of the LCAP is also to make sure that we're accountable to the public and that the public is aware of how we're spending these funds. And so just in terms of our process, we, we do have to approve the LCAP by July first. Here are a few of the items that need to be approved. Absent from that, but associate, associated with it are also the federal addendum to the LCAP as well as the local indicators. The federal addendum is a part of the LCAP, but you'll be getting a presentation at the meeting on the twenty eighth by Ms. Rishishi on local indicators. She's really excited about that. We've been talking about local indicators recently. Even more excited about having to write the new narrative sections of the local indicators that were added this year. Just in terms of process, some things are going to change next year. So this year it was brought up as an optional piece to do a mid-year presentation. Of course, that was brought up mid-year as an idea to do a mid-year presentation. So it's a little late. The state has said that was optional, but they do want to see it next year. But by June thirtieth, again, those elements that, that we mentioned before their two board meetings, this will be the presentation at the twenty eighth. That will be the, the, the meeting at which to adopt. Also not in this timeline, this is the official timeline. But through the Alameda County Office of Education, we submit a draft version of the LCAP in May to them for their review and their input. Since that time, we've made the adjustments that they've recommended. As with every year, we do engage our educational partners and make sure that we get input from a variety of stakeholder groups. It is a legal requirement that we bring the LCAP and present our current LCAP as well as gather input from the D LAC, the District English Language Advisory Committee, as well as our Student Leadership Alliance and our Parent Leadership Council. Those are the three required groups. In addition to that, it is recommended that we consult with our collective bargaining groups who give us some input as well as some community groups. As you can see, we consult with lots of different groups above and beyond what's needed. Because as we look at those strategic directions, we know that as a part of our district's vision, we want communities from all groups to be involved as much as possible. And so in terms of the plan structure, what you'll see is that the LCAP begins with general information about our school district. There are then some narrative sections where we reflect on the successes and identified needs as well as LCAP highlights. In addition to that, there are significant budget sections with actions that, that for each expenditure has a line item with the narrative explaining what it does, how much is spent. And then we explain any differences between what we plan to spend and what we actually spent. I'd like to thank Ms. Chan for, and her department for helping with that very significant work. So goals and actions. So as I was mentioning before, the sections that are broken up into four different goals. And we'll touch on what those four goals are momentarily. But within each of those goal sections, there's an analysis of how we did on each goal. So we report that the annual outcomes for academics, that could be test scores. It could be the facility inspection tool. If we're looking at what's, how our facilities are doing, it could be something along the lines of input on the California Healthy Kids Survey. If we're looking at social emotional results. And then we have narrative responses. As I mentioned before, identifying what's going well, what are areas in need of attention? And then we update the tables to, to provide a snapshot, just basics in terms of how those metrics map out, what our goals are and how much we're spending. So as I mentioned on the last slide, we do have four goals. So the LCAP goals are broken up into four areas. The first being teaching and learning, this is our academic goal. This is where we measure student progress on ELA, mathematics and, and other academic areas. Positive learning environment, this, even though it is a requirement to be contained in the LCAP, is not attached specifically to LCFF spending. Because most of the spending in the positive learning environment section is coming from general fund, not from the supplemental LCFF dollars. Our third goal being parent empowerment, making sure that we are actively involving parents and finally student engagement. And, you know, we do a great job, I think, of involving students, not just in getting their input, but actually making sure that we hear their voices when we're making decisions as well. Within goal one, most, being an academic local agency, you would expect that most of the goals are in the academic area and they are. And these are some examples of what the goals are. So everything, and I won't go through each item, but everything from MTSS to Avid programs, our intervention programs, PD, all of those elements that, that are related to academics that are above and beyond the core instructional program are listed in this section. And I do want to note also, we are unique as a district. And that a lot of districts find ways to fadangle and fadangle and, and move things around so that they can, you know, find a back door into spending these funds on what should be spent out of a, a core instructional, out of general fund dollars. We do not do that. All of the funds that, that are expended are to supplement, not supplant the work that we're doing. Within goal two, as I mentioned before, this has to do with having adequate facilities and materials. And so even though there aren't as many items in this area, it really is significant. And we know from the bond presentations, et cetera, what amazing work is going on, not just with construction, but also with the maintenance of our facilities, making sure our students have adequate materials. Parent engagement, this section speaks to programs such as Black Minds Matter, Mariachi, and things that we do in general to out, to do outreach with our families and making sure that we're supporting our families and students. Especially, I want to draw your attentions, item three point five. Nick McMaster and, and our Student Services Group, we look at what's going on in Portable Five in terms of distributing food, distributing personal items, et cetera. Much of that funding, aside from the donations, comes out of LCFF. And then finally, student engagement. Many of our social emotional supports that we think of as being so important, our social workers, elementary counselors, et cetera, come from goal number four. So, and just in conclusion, in terms of the process for the LCAP, it is agendized for final approval on the twenty eighth. At that point, it'll be posted to our website along with and sent to the COE. Oftentimes, the COE will give us additional input at the end of that process and may ask for small additions to be made, but nothing of material nature. And then at that point, it's posted to the website and becomes final. So any questions from the board?
I have a question and I know the answer, but I want to share it with the community is, you know, when you talk about Alameda County Office of Education, in the past, they've given us positive feedback about where we're going and what we're doing. Can you maybe give some anecdotal highlights of those themes from the past?
Sure, definitely. Well, one of the things that they've noted is the way in which our narratives are written. It, it's really is reflective. If you were to take our strategic directions and look and compare them to the LCAP, you'll see the same themes, the same things that we say we're interested in doing with the community really are reflected there. So it's not just, even though it's, you know, two hundred plus page document, it really does contain a lot of information in terms of the work that we're doing. So if a person wants to learn about our district, we've gotten the feedback that you really can learn about Castro Valley through reading the LCAP.
I was just going to say, one of the concerns people have just statewide, as you hear, is why we have so many plans, right? So LCAP was actually created so that there's one plan. Of course, the last few years you've done like, like fifteen other plans that they've required. But it's supposed to be really what drives all of this. And what they really, what I have to give kudos to Ed Services is, and, and Ms. Chan, is everything is aligned to our strategic plan, our strategic directions and LCAP and the school plans at the school sites. So they love that, to see that alignment. But, and they kept saying when they've started, this will be like a thirty page document and now it's two hundred.
It's shorter now. At one point, our LCAP was longer than the US budget.
Any other board questions? Thank you so much for your last report on the LCAP for our district. Dr. Ryman, and I will close the public hearing for LCAP. I will now open the public hearing for the proposed twenty-three, twenty-four preliminary budget and I will hand it over to Assistant Superintendent Chan.
Okay, thank you so much. So yeah, so this is our, the preliminary budget. And just reminding us of the annual budget cycle, this is the first time you're seeing the twenty-three, twenty-four, although we did go through a CBB process. You gave us direction on the development of the budget back in, in April. So, so with all of that information and your direction, we prepared the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. This is a list of our operating funds and capital funds. We, a total of thirteen that we, we manage. So basically, you know, all thirteen funds, there are activities on a regular basis. One being the, the, you know, the big one is really our general fund that we really talk about. And as I go through the presentation, you'll, you're, you are always seeing a general fund just because that is where our, all our operating expenditures are coming from. General fund, in terms of general fund revenues, this is both unrestricted and restricted. Our primary source of revenue is really coming from the grade span base grant. This is the local control funding formula that, you know, that gives us the, the, the base grant for, for each grade level. And the, and also our income is based on average daily attendance. So that's important to note, that is not enrollment, although we have ninety, we're at ninety-two hundred in terms of number of students, but our actual funding is, is the average daily attendance. So our total general fund revenues is a hundred thirty-one point four million dollars. And this is where the money is coming from. LCFF, let us mention, local control funding formula is eighty, makes up the eighty percent of that. And that eighty percent of the bottom of that slide is where you see seven million is really for supplemental funds, which is the, what Dr. Ryman shared with the LCAP. One percent local, other state seventeen percent, and of course, federal is bringing, gives us about two percent of our revenue. Unrestricted, so now you've seen the total unrestricted and restricted combined. Now we're just unpacking the restricted, just looking at revenue sources there. So eighty-two million dollars is the LCFF. And also you approved the resolution last meeting, the education protection account, which is about twenty-two million dollars that we get as part of the LCFF calculation. State revenues, we do get lottery, unrestricted lottery, as well as mandated block grant. And of course, the transportation that we included as part of the, the required plan that we submitted to, to the board and the, and you approved back in April or actually March, because it was, the requirement was for, for that plan to be approved by April first. And then local, local revenue, interest, other revenue and also funds that we get from the ROP program. On the restricted general fund revenues, we have about six hundred thousand dollars. This is actually going, this is for the, it's the property taxes that goes directly to our special ed funding. Federal funds of special ed, one point nine million dollars, really not that much, which is about twelve percent. And then, of course, then other state, as you can see the list there, including grants that we applied for the CTA incentive grant that we partner with our ROP, with the ROP. And so we're very, you know, we're, we're, we are happy that, you know, to partner with them and they continue to, to seek grants in addition to, well, including this incentive grant that have increased over time. So you're used to seeing a point two, then it went to four hundred thousand dollars and now it's actually up to six hundred thousand dollars. So, so we're happy about that. We, we also have the dual language immersion, which is a grant that, that Ed Services applied for, which is wonderful. And then, of course, the strong workforce grant for about three hundred thousand dollars. Terms of the expense, you've seen the revenue side and now the expenditures, wanted to really itemize wanted to really itemize the, what our personnel versus non-personnel. 81% is going to people, and, and then, of course, then other things like materials and services that we have is, makes up about 19%. Here's a list of them, non-personal expenditures, just so. This was included in the presentation that, that, that we did back in, in, in March. And so just really a list of where the money is going. So we know the people, we know a staffing allocation based on the number of students that we have, but we, a lot of people are at, you know, would like, it's always good to share the information of where the other, the 19% is going. So, you know, from utilities to insurance to equipment rentals, rentals and leases, as well as debt service payment for our certificates of participation that we, we have, we do have and are paying. That makes up the $24.9 million. Yep, go ahead.
Um, yes.
Yes, yes, thank you. Terms of the contribution of special ed, so total expenditures is 29.7, 27.9 million total expenditures. This excludes the, this, this not includes the SALPA AU budget. So really, this is just Castro Valley, especially ed expenditures. So always good to show how much money we're, we're getting from the federal government for special ed. It's $1.8 million or 6.5% of our expenditures. State is, is giving us 33% or 9.2. And local, which as I mentioned earlier, is property taxes that goes directly to special ed, is that $600,000. The bulk of the, the, where the money is coming from is really a contribution from the general fund into this, into this program, which is 58.3%.
Just a quick note, that this is where, when we talk about advocacy at the federal level, pushing for, I mean, they give us 6%, 7%, the requirements are federal requirements, and we should, we want to do them, and we should be doing them, but we don't actually get more than, I mean, we, less than half of the budget.
The other, the contribution, right, so that we, we do have, it's casters and culprits, which are our pension plans for our employees. And so just always showing, this is always a good reminder of where we started back in 1314. How much at that time? It's 4.8 million. Now it's grown all the way to 16.5 for this upcoming budget 2324 year. So you've looked at the revenues and expenditures, now the components of ending fund balance. Our ending fund balance is $14.4 million, and we have this set of sides here, including the supplemental funds that we are committing. As Dr. Raymond mentioned earlier about, we are very purposeful as far as spending our funds, and if there are, you know, any leftover funds, carryover that we didn't spend out of the supplemental funds, we do need to set aside, it's required. And so that's, those funds are committed, can't use them for any other purpose other than what, what we have in the LCAP. So that's $1.3 million, and so our reserve level as of this proposed budget is 6.86% or 9.1 million. So this year, so with this budget, proposed budget, we now need to look at adding another year, which is 2526. So this is our, the key assumptions for the multi-year projection. So you'll see enrollment, our projected ADA, and how much, and how many, much of, how many, that ADA out of the ADA, our projection is how much is going to be funded. And of course, then our duplicated count, which is, this is now increased to about 40%. Which is, yes, yes. So we were hovering between 26, 27%, and now we're up to 40% because of the, what we implemented this year with the help of Ed Services, Student Services, and Child Nutrition, to really have our families fill out the alternate income form. And that is the reason why we have, we are at 40%. So we will continue that this upcoming year for, so our, our families can continue to fill that out, and we can continue to see this increase because it benefits the district with that $7 million for supplemental funds for that. And that's out of the, that's due to the 40%. When we were at 26%, we were only getting about $5 million. So that's an additional $2 million for us.
Can I just clap real fast?
Yes.
Pretty cool. Sorry, I'm really excited. Thank you to you and your staff.
And I think that was the concern, when we didn't need to be asking people to fill out the form for, for nutrition services. Every district was like, well, how do we know then who qualifies, right? So thank you. Yeah.
The one-time block grant in 2223, this is just, again, just a note, even though I know we're, we're really talking about 2324, I put in our, in our financials that is noted because of the proposal to reduce the block grants that, from the May revise that the governor released last month. And then, of course, the COLA, as you can see here in our multi-year projection, is 8.22% with the proposed budget, 2324. In our multi-year, as at this, based on this, how we prepared our multi-year, it's zero. We're not assuming COLA in 2425 and 2526 until we hear more information from, at the state level. And then the base grant are listed here. Here's what our multi-year projections look like from, you know, we include estimated actuals. We have the budget, and we have the two out years, which is 2425 and 2526. You know, from revenues all the way down to total expenditures and ending fund balance. And looking at, all the way at the bottom is our reserve percentage. So you'll see 8.8, 6.86% with, in 2324, and then to 2526, it's down to 4.58%. Okay, and now other funds. So on the, to, also 200 pages of the budget, you'll see each fund. So we, for the proposed budget, we don't have any activity in Fund Eight, which is our student activity special reserve. We don't, we, we don't record those until we actually receive the funds. And so that's why it's zero. But for everything else, like from Fund Ten, which is our pass-through for, for the member districts, that's about close to 7, $37 million. And Adult Ed and Self-Insurance Fund, this, the total for all these funds is $60 million. And then, similar to the LCAP, we have, we will present, which is not here, but we, this will be approved, we'll need, we'll need, we'll request the board to approve this budget at the next meeting, which is on the 28th. And then, as part of the 2324 budget, once the governor approves the state budget, then we will present any changes that impacts Castro Valley in August. And then we will have the unaudited actuals for prior year as we, once we are done with closing. Any questions?
No questions. Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Chan. We will now on, move on to item 9F, which is approve the amended appointment of board representatives. And I just, just so everyone know, oh, oh, I'm sorry. Before I do that, I need to close the public meeting. Thank you. The public hearing is closed officially. Now we will move on to item 9F. Thank you for the assist, Amy. Appreciate it. Superintendent Amati.
Yeah, so I'm bringing this item to the board to amend. If you recall, in December, we go through all the committees that, that you want to volunteer or assign to. And we're adding one more committee for you to consider actually assigning or volunteering for one, and that is Pride Alliance, which the Castro Valley Pride will put together, and I believe it's going to be monthly meetings. And then, once we get that information, we'll pass it on to whoever the person is. But this is here for you to consider amending the appointment of board representatives so that we can add that.
Amy, do we have the total point count for each board member? Thank you for that. And then I just want to thank, I know they're not here tonight, but CD Pride for inviting the board. Really appreciate their continued coordination and collaboration, and I look forward to their event on July 5.
Yeah, and I did let them know once we have the person, and then we'll do that. And then the, the staff member who will be attending will be our coordinator of Behavioral Services, Mary Ann Meadows.
And then I guess the question, because I, I mean, I'm not interested because I have too many points.
Well, I'm very interested in participating in this. This is an issue that's very important to me personally, and I think it's really critical that, well, I might miss the wrong word. I'm really glad that we're going to have representation with this alliance. I think that it's a partnership that's going to really benefit our kids, especially who need to know that there are adults looking out for them and who are here to advocate for them and stand up for them. So I would, I would like to offer myself and my service.
Gary?
Do you want to motion on this?
Yes, please.
Well, I'd move that we add the, the position to our list of assignments, annual assignments, and I nominate Sarah.
I will second, and also thank you.
I'll second it. You don't have to.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Thank you, CD Pride, for including us. Trusty Raymond, no preference. Why do I do that? Your, your vote, Trusty Raymond.
It's a habit, I know. I vote yes. Thank you.
Trusty Howard?
Yes.
Trusty Adams?
Yes.
I will vote yes. The motion passes for a zero. Can't wait to hear about the alliance when it starts.
I'll be happy to report back.
Great.
And thank you guys for putting your faith in me.
We will move on to board member comments and reports. Trusty Raymond.
I think the last couple of weeks have been very much full of graduation commencement ceremonies and promotions. I, I've really enjoyed participating in those. It's just been such a wonderful celebration, not just of our kids, but really of our entire district, and to see the kind of accomplishments that our kids are going through. I think, you know, I, I feel like I was most profoundly touched by the graduation at the CD Adult Career Education. About a week ago, it was really, it was moving. It was extremely moving. And, you know, I just, I think it's a nice message to everybody that, you know, we can have second chances in life. And it's really nice to be a district that offers that to people. So I'm glad to be here and support the SOR programming.
Thank you, Trusty Raymond. Trusty Howard.
Yes, it's been a busy time. You know, we all went to lots of graduations, and they were all really terrific. So also made the senior art show, which was a nice thing, and the Jenny Lynn Service, which is always every year, both very nice and very sad event. Also want to reiterate what Peter said earlier, because we had a hard ad hoc meeting and some other business in the last few weeks, and that process went well, and I, like, I agree completely with what Peter said, that this is really great for the community for a long time into the future. And I hope we can, maybe we can figure out some other places where we can work together here. So that's a, bodes well for the future. So, and thanks also to Lavender, because she was involved in all that, and did a lot of great work on it. I was at the Eden Area ROP meeting last, well, a few days ago, last Friday, actually. The big events there were we, we completed the evaluation goals for the superintendent. We had a nice report. They had five students from DECA at the national competitions, and they were all five from Castro Valley. It's good for us, I thought. Finally, we gave, they have a very different financing system than what we have. They don't have any bargaining units. Their teachers are on one-year contracts. It's a very different. They're competing with the private sector because of the nature of the classes that they teach. So we voted them a 4% raise for next year. I think that went very well. We have the money, and we're in the black, I'm glad to say. And two things here to the end, for the end. Hope you all got to see the forum today. There were two very nice, nice articles in there. One about the graduation at Redwood on the front page, and another one on page two about the adult school graduations. They're both terrific. So one, you know, last week, we had the high school in there, and this week, we had two more schools in. And one last small thing I'll mention is the Keep Rising Up Awards that we gave at Redwood. We're expanding next year to the adult school because nobody's ever given them awards either, and they graduate a certain number of high school diplomas and a certain number of GED certificates. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Trusty Howard. Trusty Adams.
All right, yes. So it was graduation season. I guess the first thing I had done since we last met as a board on this kind of meeting was the senior awards night. It was a very cold night. My, it took a little while to warm up from that one, but it was really wonderful, too. It was absolutely amazing to see all of the seniors, like, getting their awards for, and scholarships for all the hard work that they had done. So that was terrific. There was Redwood graduation in the CFA, which is such a really wonderful place to have a graduation anyway. All the parents and siblings and whatnot are very comfortable in very nice seats while Redwood graduates. And for me, it was good to see some of my old buddies. Creekside Promotion, very nice, beautiful. The way they lay it out, and they have the tents for all of the, or the tarp coverings for the graduates, I think is really wonderful. And Canyon Promotion, which is a larger, so it's a CVHS campus, was really great. Let's see, what else? And then the last thing, I think also, we went on, we had a SOR meeting or something like that. I don't remember what day that was. We were, yeah, it was a while ago. I, I didn't see it on my calendar, but I, I remember we did that. And then, last thing is I went to Redwood yesterday, just to, this wasn't really as a board member. It was more as a teacher, because I used to teach the counseling and rich class, some volunteer work to just help them with curriculum, behavior. I'm going to go next week about IEP writing, to help her how to write IEPs and that sort of thing. And somebody asked, are you getting paid for this? And I'm like, no, I can't get paid for this. That is not possible. It is all volunteer work, of course.
Thank you, Trusty Adams. Superintendent Amati.
Don't have anything other than what I talked about, but I do want to say the scholarship night, they added up all the scholarships that students had and the grants. It was $2.3 million that our students received. That's amazing, $2.3 million. Last year, it was 1.4 or 5. It's amazing, amazing. And then I just wanted to say, great job on expanding that grant, the scholarship to adult school, as well as, that is such a great idea.
I have only represented the board, working with Superintendent Amati on the agenda and with Amy. Lastly, before we go, Dr. Raymond, you will be greatly missed. I can't wait to coordinate with you and Hayward and have some friendly competition. You know, game theory is real, so we can compete on all kinds of things. But I just want to thank the board for tonight, and I hope everyone has a lovely evening, and this concludes our board meeting. Good night.